The National Institute of Technology, University of Technology Malaysia, UTM Kuala Lumpur. He received a PhD from Ultrak University Faculty of Geoscience, the Netherlands. United Nations University, UNU Disaster Risk Management Centre for Special. Sorry, with cooperation of Faculty Geo Information Science and Third over Mission, University of twenty. In this United Nations University, UNU Disaster Risk Management Centre for Special Analysis and Risk Management. He is one of the science and technology expert panel for DRR to National Disaster Management Agency, NACMA. Technical Committee for Interagency for Slope Management and many national committees. He is particularly engaged in various societies, including European Geoscience Union and I E E E Geoscience and Remote Sensing Society. He has garnered international recognition, including being named a top eleven Young World Geopolitists and receiving Medica Award Grants. His contribution extends to disaster risk reduction programs, adding him for membership in the IRDR Young Scientists Program. And in and recognized as twenty twenty-one outstanding ASEAN Science Diplomat. Without further ado, I will welcome Dr. Kamaru Azali Raza.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Faroq, for the introductions. Sir Chigira, can you hear us? Once again.
Yes, I can.
Perfect. We are still waiting one more analyst from one. Professor Diggini while. While waiting, perhaps we can keep up our sessions, three more minutes to go. Official sessions, Bismillah, and you're here, Salam, and very good day, everyone. Welcome to the special sessions. And for this particular point, I will be your moderator for today. It's my great pleasure to be here to support the session. And perhaps before we begin, let's give a big hand to our organizing committee. Let's join me. Give a big hand out in two days. And I think last night was so memorable, the dinner. It's not just about the food, it's about also about the dancing, I guess. Are aware. So, Mr. President. Thank you very much, Mr. Rashid. And I think for this particular point, it was co-designed to look into how basically we can support. The. Well, perhaps first, we have to understand about the past. And second, how we can rejuvenate for the future. So for this particular session, we chose particularly the titles Engineering, Geology and Geotechnics for Disaster Risk Reduction and Community Series. Continent to continent discussions. So together with me today on screen online, live from Tokyo, Japan, Professor Masahiro Chigira. Thank you, Chigira Sensei, for joining us. And I'm not alone. I would like to invite two more panelists. And and that was the last morning. Oh lovely, please have a seat. Good, great. We have two more minutes, by the way. We can start. We have four segments today. Two segments, the first two segments. We would like to hear views and opinions of our analysts. The last two segments, we would like to open to the floor. Not only those who are here physically, but also we are open to the our. We are open to our participants who are joining online. So. Perhaps. Organizing committee will help me. While there will be a series of message, perhaps questions on chat box. And also those who are in this hall for today. So we have one and a half hour session. I know it's going to be lengthy. Even the fact that it's already two years, sorry, two days is like a two years. It's back to back from one room, so another one session to another. I know it's not easy, but believe me, this session is so critical for the future. We have prepared ten key recommendations. I want to be announced, to be shared at the. At the end of the session. So I think that's on time. One minute to go. Professor Diggini. Good morning, good afternoon from Kuala Lumpur, good morning from Kigali. Can you hear us?
Morning.
Morning. Lovely. That's enough to begin our sessions today. So, well, we got four panelists. And for this particular part, we have divided into four segments. The first two segments is on the lateral perspective views. So we would like to hear. A best practice, stories of the past, how much basically they learn from the past. And lesson, unlearned lessons as well. Yeah, so there are many a story from the field, I believe. And then the second part of the panel discussions, we are addressing about the future. Understanding about the demand in the future, particularly from the prospective agenda. Chanting the future, noble technologies, innovation and translational approach. So I think let's have these two session set by by our panelists. It will perhaps give us some clues on how we can move forward to the second part of the session. Well, this about the sessions today is feel free if you have any questions, any remarks, recommendations, feel free. Continence to continue means here we have on my right, that was Zakaria, he's from Malaysia, on my left. And William from New Zealand, perhaps she will be representing our groups. And we have Professor Chigira from Japan. And we have also Professor Diggini from Rwanda. So perhaps she he be representing. Those who are living in this African continents. So to set the scene for today. I think that's enough to hear about the engineering geology for the last two days. To hear some of the best practice on the. Geo, geotechnical engineering aspect. But I think what we learned from the last two days and how much this information, knowledge and and also solutions that we gain. Perhaps to reduce the future risks, to prevent the impact of the future climate change. And for that particular one, I would like to also inform that the panelists will also address a few. Questions at the end of the session and I'm. For this particular part, I'm happy to welcome not only those who are in the practitioner world. But also those who are in the research world, I think. Thank you very much. I think there are many colleagues here from the academic world. Feel free to express your consent, some gaps between the practitioner world and the academic world, research world. And we have to come to the conclusions today. So ten key recommendation have been. Sentatively. So depending on our session for one and a half hours, if you can add some more. So I hope that we still have time at the end of the session to hear a story from our vice presidents, from our colleague. Here who are attending the session. So to begin with, I think on my rank, that was Zakaria, if you can introduce yourself. One or two minutes about yourself. And also, and everybody know you, I hope, but. Something interesting to inform today, we are live streaming to those who are cannot flying from Rwanda, from. Africa, and we are not just invited Professor Diggini. We are also extended these invitations to the ministry in charge of emergency management in Rwanda. So there are going to be groups of disaster managers, policymakers from Africa. From Rwanda in particular, who will be joining us as well. So please keep in mind, there are going to be a series of. Questions and also concerns from the audience and online. So that was Zakaria, applause yours.
Thank you, Dr. Kamaru, and Bismillah, Alhamdulillah, Salam, good morning, very good afternoon. And very good morning, I would, Dr. Angus in Rwanda. My name is Zakaria Muhammad. I am a geologist by profession. Currently, I am president and. National Association. National Association. Or Geo Disaster and Community Resilience and Geo. And also an agent professor at the BBC and again. And before that, I worked with the Department of Geoscience at that time, I had. I have opportunity to tell out this assessment using. Technology at a particular time. That's all from me. Thank you.
Wait, please.
Tali Nivasi. Hi, my name is Anne Williams. I am a practitioner. I have been a practitioner all of my career and have been involved in responding to a number of these climate challenges. Over the years, in particular, to national states of emergency deployed in twenty ten eleven. And again, just this last year in twenty twenty-three.
Good. Thank you, Anne. Thank you, Zakaria. So let's move to our. Panelists on screens, Professor Chigira, if you don't mind, you go first.
Okay, Teri Makashi, Kamaruru, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. First of all, I must apologize, I cannot join you on site. But I'm very honored to be here online as a panelist. I'm a geologist and I used to be working for Disaster Prevention Research Institute, Kyoto University, Japan. And several years ago, I retired and now working in a small research institute in Tokyo, Fukada Geological Institute. I was once president of Japan, Japanese Society of Engine Geology. And okay, that's it.
Thank you, Professor Chigira. We are happy to welcome you virtually indeed. Professor Diggini, if you can hear us, applause yours.
Thank you. I'm very also happy to meet you in the virtually. I will be happy next time to meet you physically, either in Rwanda or in Kuala Lumpur. My name is Professor Dean Ngerwabuhungu. I'm a geologist. The dean and founder of the School of Mining and Geology at the University of Rwanda. At the continental level, I chair a team of fourteen high learning institution. Under the project Tuning Africa, to design an applied geology program that's addressed. At the same time, geology, environmental and geotechnics issues. That my my profile and I will be very pleased to exchange with colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Professor Diggini. Once again, we would like to welcome all the participants who are just joining us online from Rwanda. From Japan. Thank you very much for joining us. And also from Malaysia, Chair Rashid. We make this session open to all. Yeah, so perhaps some of you have faith. But for this particular part, we are open up sessions for those who are perhaps can't join us in the last two days. Good. I think let's start running the ball. I I think we we have a long list of questions. And they do prepare a slides, but don't bother with the slides. Basically, they are not giving any presentation. Just give you some a clue of the point of the discussions today. So for the first round. Discussion series number one, we are. Interested to hear a story of the past. Reflecting of the past experience and best practice related to engineering geology and geotechnics. But for this particular part, we would like to link up a link with the disaster risk reductions and disaster resilience. So these two parts, and we have a keynote lecture by Anne from Risk to Resilience. I think she said a good sense of today's sessions, we are not just interested on the geological hazards. Assessing vulnerability and hazards, perhaps understanding the current and future risks. But how basically we can assess a certain risk and build the societal resilience. Just to set the scene. It's a report released by the United Nations Office for Disaster Residencies. In Asia-Pacific, we lost people in every thirty minutes due to natural disaster. So for this particular one, I just put statements from the United Nations Office for Disaster Residencies. This on the two decades reports on the title of the Human Cost of Disaster. The overview of the last twenty years, two zero zero zero, two zero nineteen. Three points. The first part, there are significant shift and increments of the numbers of the disaster in the past. And we are talking about four point two billion affected people. And resulting in approximately USD two point nine seven trillion in the global economic losses. Number one. Number two, in Asia, we are talking about the highest number of disaster event recorded and reported. In fact, eight of the ten top ten countries in the world. Affected by the disaster event are located in Asia. So these two. Well, coming from Asia, Asia-Pacific, Asian regions, we would like also to learn from Africa. And why Rwanda? Why Professor Diggini today? I think I give you a little background. I was I was involved in the international project. And especially the international experts to the project funded by. A German Development Fund. So what we are trusted in forty percent, forty percent of. Land in Rwanda are basically susceptible to landslides and slope failures. So we learn a lot from the past. And I hope that Professor Diggini can also share with us some of the clue on how basically you can improve. Use some of the local knowledge, scientific knowledge, coupled with the technology and and improve our understanding to the future surface and processes. Let's go to the first questions then. Lesson from the past, that though. And I think that though with your intensive and expansive experience in engineering geology. As a former chairman of the Board of Geology, I think you are in the right positions today. To comment and give us some insight about the experience of the past, how basically. Series of landslides and slope failures, or even the sediment in use and debris flow in particular. How you learn from the part of this is a tragedy and and what will be your command? The importance of learning from the past to inform the future strategy is that though, just to. Roll the ball, please.
Thank you. First thing is. Maybe talking about the development of engineering geology in Malaysia itself. We are very lucky because in Malaysia, we have several initiatives by the governments and the justice. Related to road development. Actually, we we developed engineering geology. Was early nineteen seventy-five, when we have this very high rate, which we indicate road construction. And from there, we learned what was wrong about the geology or that side. From the material and so on, a lot of testing as well. And that activities continue. It can be especially last ten years since two thousand fifteen. Squid in Mount Nabalu, we got. Massive rock fall and debris flows. And that opened up for the policymakers to invest in more research, more study. Including road network in Malaysia. And also special study at a risk assessment in municipal area. Cut out by the GNG and also by the public wood department. At the same time, we have seen the. W flow landslide. And in fact, two thousand fifteen seventeen, the pinay was hit by the mud flood. And used to type one designated just at the tail. They also triggered the policymakers and government to get it, look at the closely about the issue of landslide. Blood and so on. Because of that, I also noticed that it were not only. It worked and also energy, energy sectors like can be and. Them that look at the studies of the engine geology and the technical engine to the whiskey. From that, the development of engine geology is. And also them are recently major landslide effect and. From that, various and super study have been done. I think our geologists and engineers during the work from that studies, we have a lot of information. That is why we. I think the consequences of events, a government invest in the disaster risk reduction. So in turn of overall picture, government also, Malaysian government also. Also follow the sender, sender frameworks, which is the four prioritization. First one is of course, understanding of risk, that's where is rural engineering geology there. And the secondary risk governance are related to cut line and and so on. And investing in mitigation and structure and non-structure. And that's why I want to talk about non-structures, the mitigation. And of course, preparedness, respond and do better. Those are the areas we kind of priority in Malaysia. And there's opportunity for development now for engineering geology and for construction industry and development. Where called resilient, critical, and productive as well, community resilient, yes.
Thank you, Zakaria. It's our great pleasure to have Zakaria today. I I believe there are some participants here who are also working under the supervision of Zakaria in the last thirty-five years. Yeah, so welcome everyone. So today is your session. Feel free if you have any particular sessions, questions, remarks, feel free to highlight. So let's move quickly to my lap. Well, it's written here the questions, but I think I would like to quote here. What are the most significant lesson learned from past experience in engineering geology, geotechnics and disaster resilience? How can we apply them to current and future challenges? That's what was written in the moderation notes. Feel free here.
Right. In order to respond to that, I kind of need to describe to you some of the events that we have had in New Zealand's over the last thirteen years. In twenty ten, some of you may recall, it was the first day of the IAG Congress in Auckland, New Zealand. And there was a significant seven point one magnitude earthquake in Canterbury. Fortunately, no one died in that first event, but there was quite a lot of liquefaction and. Rupture and so forth, to quite a bit of disruption. Following that event, there were four more significant earthquakes. Which are part of this Canterbury earthquake sequence. They occurred in twenty eleven, February, June, I think October and December. But the February one was most significant, caused significant damage in the city centre. And we lost one hundred and eighty-five people. So just a pop back. So for me, the Canterbury earthquake was character, well, series of earthquakes were characterized by. Liquefaction, which you can see in the top right hand corner. So. The city was covered in silt, a significant depth of silt. So liquefaction became the household word, although the media described liquefaction as the salt that was deposited rather than. Rockfall within the hills, there's a bowl there going through someone's house. And lateral spread. And some of the significant things that we learned were around liquefaction. Liquefaction occurred at the same location again and again and again. So in each of those five significant bits, events, liquefaction occurred again, whereas we had anticipated that. After occurring once or twice, it would not reoccur. And lateral speed spread was recorded more than a hundred meters back from rivers, which is again far exceeded what we had anticipated was possible. One of the awesome things that came out of the Canterbury earthquake sequence, I suppose, was what we have now called the New Zealand Geotechnical Database. It was a Canterbury Geotechnical Database. It was a database that we established where that's available to everybody. So you contribute borehole data, CPT data, investigation data, ground water level data. It's available free to everybody, but you have to contribute as well if you can upload. So now that that process, that opportunity has been widened to all of New Zealand. And so wherever we do investigations, we upload them to this database and then they're accessible for the next investigation, which. Means that we're not redoing things that we used to do in the past. This is also the Canterbury earthquake, so it's just quite revealing, I suppose. Some of the top photo is someone standing on the hills in the south, they call the port hills. Looking at the CBD of Christ Church when the earthquake occurred in February and you can see the dust cloud. That's from the disruption that occurred in the CBD. And below, two images from just a couple of weeks, a week and a bit ago, for the February. Where significant fires occurred in the in the port hills. So that's looking from the CBD back to the hills. As a result of normally hot temperatures, temperatures in Canterbury that are similar to what we're experiencing here in Malaysia. So unheard of temperatures. So this is, this is climate change for us. We'll move on to Kaikura. This is the second event that this one occurred in twenty sixteen. The things that characterize Kaikura for me, there was fault rupture. The inset photo shows landslide dam. There were hundreds of landslide dams. Fortunately, not a lot of people living in this area. However, there is our state highway right now, major route connecting communities. And you can see there, that's a significant landslideing. What was particularly interesting was uplifting of the seafloor by two to five meters. In that area, substantial uplift and something we hadn't seen before. I suppose something that was really unusual was movement on at least thirteen volts at the same time. And this has resulted in changes to our seismic code. And that's the uplift. Now you can see the inset photo, just on the beach uplift of of what was the shore platform, significant fault rupture. And finally, the final national disaster occurred just last year. And there's a few images there. I shared a number in my talk yesterday. The the bottom right image doesn't look so exciting. And but what's important about this one, and we'll talk about it in answer to some of the other questions later. And but what's important about this one, and we'll talk about it in answer to some of the other questions later. You can see there's power pylons there. These power pylons take power to the north of New Zealand. And there was an early reconnaissance and they noticed landslip on the side there and thought that we should check it out. What we actually found is that that pylon in the middle is sitting on a landslide block. That was had reactivated with such an incredible amount of rain, unprecedented rain. And we needed to remove the, the power wires, disestablish the, the pylon and move it to an adjacent ridge.
Great, unbelievable. You made three minutes, you did five slides. Unbelievable. Well, thank you very much. And I think you set the scene and tones. And I believe that there are also a few slides from that was Zakaria was, was there. It will pop up later in the next cycle. Don't worry. We are talking about twenty one thousands. Recorded and reported slope failures in Malaysia, more than seven thousand slams. So there are many things to believe from our complexity of our tropical issues on handling these. Last moment. Let's fly to Tokyo. Professor Chigira. As a renowned scientist, working a lot on the mountain, Joe Hethes, I, I wish that, that today you can also. Share with us from the field, especially as a field geologist. And involved in many investigation over large scale disaster in Japan. Perhaps there are some best practice lesson learned and lesson unlearned that you can share with the audience today. Over to you, Professor Chigira.
Thank you, Professor Kamaru. I prepared a few slides. So can I share the slides?
Yes, please, sensei.
Can you see?
Yes, but we see the presenter notes. That's fine, isn't it?
That's fine. Okay. Say, this, there are two topics and the one first topic is. Okay, okay. This is first topic. And this is continent to continent discussion, but I'm not living in a continent. So I'd like to talk from islands of active telechronics and heavier rain. And a focus on landslides. Say lessons from the past. First of all, we, Japan, Japanese islands have been experienced many. Say landslide induced by rainfalls and also earthquakes. And rain induced landslides are different according to rainfall intensity. So strong rain induces shallow but mainly landslides and debris flows. In contrast, a large amount of rain induces fewer but much larger landslides like a rock avalanches. That's one point we learned. And earthquake induced landslides. They are strongly dependent on geology. Particularly these years in Japan, volcanic fault materials and carbonate are specifically fragile. Carbonates are not in Japan but other countries. So let me show some examples. This is strong rain induces shallow landslides. Left is two thousand twelve Japan, right is Korea. These two slides say one of the most devastating landslides. Shadow landslide, but so many landslide induced by rainfalls. But generally, they are not so big and rather small. So we can control by countermeasures and also we can say avoid them by land usage. On the contrary, a large amounts of rain induces rock avalanches like this. Left is Japan, right Taiwan. They are huge and extremely rapid. And say commonly forms landslide dams and it creates flooding and debris flows occurs. So because of these features, we cannot evacuate. So how the countermeasures are difficult. So prediction and preparedness necessary. These things we learned. And earthquake induced landslides are strongly controlled by geology. Left, two thousand twelve Japan. Sorry, this is not two thousand twelve, two thousand eighteen, occurred in Hokkaido. This is one of the most devastating landslide hazards induced by earthquakes. Not only in Japan, but all over the world, I think. And this example in China, two thousand eight. So many lands are induced by a winter earthquake in carbonate area. And that's because this is a Batu Cave in Malaysia. This, so many landslides are due to the properties of carbonate dissolution by groundwater. These two are just an example and many other types occurred. But they are strongly dependent on the geological structures. As landslide induced by Kaikora landslide introduced by Arm and. But earthquakes cannot be predicted, so we need to always prepare for earthquakes. Like do not sleep on the ground floor. Our experience says landslides hit the ground floor and the second floor are rather much safer. That's our experience tells us. Okay, thank you. That's just some example.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Professor Chigira. It was amazing, remarkable sessions indeed. Well, I think you give us a different views based on different cases. From Japan, Korea, China, Indonesia and Taiwan. Thank you. I think this. Well, first round, let's set the scene on how complex our, our geology. And how important this geology knowledge and information is to make good decisions. I think Professor Chigira has listed some the clue which part which type. Require a specific disaster service reduction strategies. Let's fly to Kigali then. Is much more complex, I believe, and Professor Deeging. And I'm, I'm happy to give a quick one or two questions to the floor here physically, if you have a quick. Burning questions to the point raised by or presented by the panelists. Before we jump to the second discussions, yeah. So over to you, Professor Deeging.
Thank you very much. I have prepared a few slides, trying to share it. Do you see it?
It's coming. Yeah, make it a slideshow then, please, please.
Thank you very much. The challenge will be time slot, but I will do my best. And then this is my presentation. I already done it. What you can learn from the past. First of all, we know that Rwanda is a long country located in Central East Africa and favorable natural disease. And when we go in the past, we remember how intense and frequent landslide flood and F K Tritoness are. On second to third May last year, we lost one hundred thirty five individual, more than five thousand houses. And other critical infrastructure were damaged, including a direct loss of over three hundred million. This underscore a significant gap in existing geology and geotechnical study. And the need to integrate our expertise into early warning system and resilience practices. As you see the map of the earth, Africa is a continent with very high level of exposure and high level of exposure. Different natural geo hazard. The vision for global implementation and innovative solution and technology for resilient disaster practice. We think that technology driven innovation should be our ally. And factors the synergy of different expertise. There must be a unified approach where real time geological data enhance the precision of early warning. We need intercontinental collaboration and standardize the best plan. For doing so, we need to educate our generation, young generation of scientists. In two thousand eighteen, fourteen academic institutions in Africa. Was sitting together to design and implement a degree program in applied geology. I lead that team and we published this under their project tuning Africa. We design, implement a degree program in applied geology. Under the collaboration of A U and African A U and you publish the book you see in the script. This is the foundation. Of how we will dedicate our future generation of geologists and mining engineer. To focus particularly in. This what we call meta profile, we elaborate. This meta profile is in education, we need to have some value to educate our future graduate. They must be able to do exploration geology, mining geology. But also geotechnics and environmental geology and regulation. And that is the core of their meta profile. Then other, other critical thinking and sensitivities, leadership, quality management, socioeconomic impact, communication and population. Come in that design of their applied geology program. Is currently running in the University of Rwanda. And we are on, on this particular design program. I don't know why it stopped to run. Okay. Then the next. What should we do? For continental, if we train professionals. Which apply the geology, it's good. But we need to foster cross continental partnership in engineering, geology and geotechnics. That's why we are here today, to try to establish knowledge exchange platform. Collaborative research initiative, joint education program. And fostering shared resources. For us, that will solve all challenging if everyone must be the architect of the resilient future. However, nothing can be done without the contribution of the community. Community are not passive recipients. They are active partner. Their local knowledge is a treasury trough. We need to leverage knowledge of geology and geotechnics to provide scientific insight into local hazard. And tap into the invaluable local knowledge held by the community. As we geologists and geotechnics conduct assessment, community must contribute their traditional wisdom. And early warning sign and local resilient strategy create a collaborative and a robust foundation for disaster. Prevalence. That's what we think and I'm sure that will make a difference if we do so. I take the opportunity to invite you all to visit Rwanda and I thank you for your consideration and attention.
Thank you, Professor Deeging. Give a big hand to Professor Deeging. Live from Kigali and the rest of the panelists. I think we'll, we just end the first cycles, yeah? Believe me, we still have more cycles, segments to complete today. Well, to continue the session, so well, as I promise, if you have any. Burning questions or inputs, precautions still needed. Based on the first point of the discussions, this is in sessions from New Zealand's. There was visited a couple of the earthquakes. There's so much we can learn. And definitely if the organizer can open a slides for that Zakaria. While waiting for the questions from the audience, yeah, physically. If any on, on, on the. On. Yeah, on, on, on lines, any questions from the, no, okay. So while we missed these slides, I think just a couple of slides if we can. Give a couple of minutes to that was Zakaria to convey some of the message of the past, learning from a few. Say fatal landslides and debris flow. I think so works to.
Thank you very much, yeah. And the slide shows here is the example of the. That's really the W flow happening in Malaysia, two thousand twenty one and twenty twenty. There's many of these, that's one example. See the debris and this is consists of a big block of raw trees. One thing we learned is the landslide can also occur in forested area, in dense populated area. Normally, generally, public thinks when you have a forested area, very dense. The probability of a landslide happening is not happening. But based on this August twenty twenty one and also other places. We found that because of very extreme rainfall, it's up to five hundred millimeters or three days. And trigger the massive landslide, numerous landslide and also trigger the river flow. But that's a change our, our thinking. Before that, we, our mapping is only in urban area. Now we have to look at upstream on the forested areas where. So that's what we learned. And after that, at that time, we are lucky because we used to. To use a technology like that technology, remote sensor intelligence technology. And we may be setting from G M G and also mapping team. And this is the first time after this event, government agency, for instance, this case is G M G. We didn't share the information with the local communities. And under the program called localization of the knowledge, body of knowledge. Based on experience from less than Japan, Taiwan and we. We together with the local community, a better community and also responder. And this may go sit down for a few days and we share the information and plan what to do. And we tell them which part is a high hazard area, which part is safe, which part is not safe. And if you receive a question, warning about the, for the. Rainbow, then they know what to do. This is a very good example and this is the one new. And now we already have a manual, we have a P O D. And of what training or trainers to empower local community. I think this is the one and new, I think. Progress in Malaysia and we know early government has set. A target every year, we should reach out twenty thousand communities per year to C B D and progress. This is a very positive moment, but it's very challenging for geologists, for us to come out. Very good, hasn't met reliable, unquestionable. And that is the technology coming picture. Thank you.
Thank you, that was Zakaria. I remember in one of the photos or slides presented by that was Zakaria. I think it was a session together with Dr. Ahayu and Unitantip. To approach community in Yan at that time, Dr. Ahayu. Perhaps Dr. Ahayu can share some of her experience as well, yeah, let that. Good, I think we. Move to the next one. Well, we have a few key peoples here, we have a vice president here. And we have many chairman of geology. From Bangladesh, from Korea, from Nepal, I wish these sessions will also explore some of the best practices. But I would like to quickly jump into the second phase, which is retrospective, it's not just about the past. It's also about the future and I believe that one of the key points here is about technology and innovation. And for this particular parts, I think let's let's move to end. Well, say the second part, perhaps the audience wish to hear some insight on the noble technologies. Perhaps some of them has been presented during your lecture. But given the fact that we have close to fifty peoples online now, so and sixty percent of them are from Rwanda. Perhaps you can share how this technology helps disaster managers. Perhaps ingenious geologists to make a right decision at the right time, that's one part, but second part. The most important issues on how basically you work with a different story, how you convey the message to the different. Field of peoples and experts and how can we ensure their effective implementation? Based on the knowledge and evidence collected by the professionals, practitioners and and definitely for your case as. Prominent. Generally, geologists, how do you see these gaps and how do you filling up and how you think that technology of the future could. Eating or at least bringing gaps. Given the complexity of the impact we're going to change in the future.
Well, that's a huge question and there's a lot of pieces there. Look, I might start with perhaps the middle part of the section of the question around, you know. A real disaster, real big problem for the country brings people together and one of the. Really positive things about disaster is that it causes collaboration and we in each case with the. Canterbury Earthworks with the. High water and and now with the cyclone Gabriel responses. We brought together contractors, so those that can physically respond consultants. Across multiple normally competitive consultants acting together in teams with the contractor, with the transport agency. And. E R L to respond to some of those infrastructure challenges because. It's no use responding to one little piece of of the problem, this is a huge problem and we need to prioritize. We need to think about the whole of the system and. We need to operate with the communities, we need to identify where they are and where the challenges are and they know best actually. What's what's really critical for them, so in each of these cases, we have responded by bringing these groups together. I suppose one of the things that is perhaps slightly disappointing that we haven't learned is, you know. In the case of the cyclone response, that is still taken. About a year to form a contract that everyone's happy with. Between the contractors, the consultants and and the owner. So fortunately for New Zealand, we have what we call network out in contracts, so maintenance contracts on the road in network and so those are made up of. Consultants and contractors working together and they were able to respond immediately before. While we wait for everyone to work out their commercial arrangements, but I guess. Then what I'm thinking is that we need to set up these entities ahead of time, knowing that with climate change, we're going to see these problems more and more. So what is an effective commercial arrangement that we can deliver a response? Would be one of my questions, I showed you that the photo with the power pylon on. Because we were concerned with a pylon located on a moving landslide block. And if a man was going to go up the top to dislodge the wires. Which actually takes quite a bit of time when they swing down the wires, if the box continued to move or the pylon continued to move, he could lose his life, so. What we did was install remote instrumentation on the legs of the pylon to determine. Whether they were moving laterally or tilting tilt meters. And everyone, the client and ourselves could monitor those on their phones and determine. Whether it was reasonably stable period for a man to go up, and so I thought. That that's probably something that we could be doing all the time, why are we inspecting all our pylons by physically having someone drive to site to use this lots of. Federal and time and it's much more efficient to install instruments and to be able to record what what's going on around a network remotely. But that's just one example.
Thank you, and I I think there's always a case where we learn from the tragedy and bounce back better. And I'm quite happy to hear the unknown story as well from the field, that's that's how we improve ourselves and make it better. For the future, so moving from a New Zealand, perhaps. We had some. Sign from. Senchi Gira. And talking about the technology and innovations, I think depends one of the leading countries. But always how, what will be the best way to convey some of the policymakers that this technology helps? So perhaps for Professor Chigira, if you can share your views on how basically that modern and advanced technology helps the. The field geologists, for example, and how these informations benefit to the larger community, the field of engineering geology and geotechnology. Please Professor Chigira.
Okay, thank you, Professor Kamaru. I'm sure that there are many kinds of new technologies, but just my idea. I'd like to share slide. Can you see?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Now, noble technologies, so innovation, trans discipline approaches for disaster resilience. I'd like to say list three, one is rider, second is a G S and the third is a monitoring method. So lighter. Using a rider, we can detect precursory features of landslide. And in addition, could be A I can help us to extract potential sites. A second G S or particularly free G S are not so expensive up G S, sorry. And using a G S, we can use maps on a scale as we like, a wide area and the closer to small areas. And the third, monitoring of a rainfall and the landslide movement. And using the monitoring data, we can say. Issue an alarm or such information and we can, we can. Develop the people's awareness and or preparedness. So this is an example of the rider, so this is a coach rock avalanche in two thousand eleven. Or in Japan, when we apply rider technique here, we can remove all trees and we can see the ground surface. And before this landslide, along this rim of landslide already small displacement occurred. So by using ladder, I'm sure that we can predict the potential size of a rock avalanche. However, near the side, there are very similar features like a small cracks. And these two seems very, say unstable, so there are so many other scary slopes which actually did not fail. So we need to say evaluate the stability. So to do that, I think A I could help us. Second is G S, this is a landslide by Noto Peninsula earthquake, this is a Noto Peninsula, ten kilometers. And the red dots indicate the locations of the landslide. So and the colors, geology maps, so by using G S, we can easily. Say investigate the relationship between landslides and and the geology or topography. So it's huge convenience to data analysis. As well as the data analysis, we can make a hazard map like this, this is a debris flow or hazard. Landslides and so failures and all over the Japan, this kind of hazard maps have been made. So G S is indispensable for hazard mapping and the platform for trans display approach. Now, this is awareness and alarming, this is a monitoring results of rainfall, rainfall, landslide, inundation and flooding. By Japan Meteoric Agency. So this kind of monitoring and the data, say. Pro. Data distributions have been made. And by using though that the alarm. Landslide or disaster alarm have been issued by using a rainfall gauge and the radars, they rainfall, monitor rainfall. And real time calculation of groundwater by using this rainfall and issuing alarm. However, this is modeling of a self surface structure, but the geological conditions that are. Only one and the difference are not considered, so this is a very sophisticated one, but. I need to say sophistication is not always reliable, we cannot make countermeasures for all unstable slopes. That's all, thank you.
Thank you very much, Professor Chigira, we are glad to see some of the. Current or modern technologies being used in the assessments from mapping to analysis and understanding better. Some of the signature or clue behind these data collected by the recent technology. Well, I wish to give a floor to the audience, feel free and. Stand up and and share with the audience if you have any particular questions. It's not a lecture session, it's a forum, it's a dialogue. And wasn't really easy for the panelists to talk for one and a half hours, so we. Have invited, yeah, perhaps, yeah, secret units, it helps. Maybe you can introduce yourself. Questions please.
Good evening, well, I'm I'm. I'm from N H P, I'm representing India. So my simple question to Miss Anne. Regarding that liquid action happens, that was very beautiful and my question is like, what was the magnitude of the earthquake that caused that liquid action? And another point is, what was the maximum depth at which you can find this systemically induced liquid action features? Because in in some of the liquids I have gone through, the maximum limit, it was found that it is a snow lake in Alaska, it was thirty meter. Would you find any liquid action pictures below that also? Because that is a point of research, because at what depth can you have this kind of liquid action features? Because for that thing, either plus below thirty meter depth, those you have to have some unconcerned case, is it possible to have unconcerned soil? And that will satisfy the condition below thirty meter, so that is my question.
I think it is possible, but we haven't seen that, so I think the deepest was about fifteen meters. In terms of, I'm trying to remember your whole question.
My another question was like, what was the scale, like what was the magnitude of the earthquake?
Yeah, so the first one was about six point five, I'm a little bit rusty on that, the subsequent ones are six point eight, six point five bit order, so not really significant earthquakes in terms of magnitude.
Okay, because the liquid access does also occur at the level of point six also magnitude, that's I wanted to.
And I think the interesting thing about these earthquakes, again, something that we hadn't understood before. Was I kind of liken it to, you know, when you do a tennis serve, you kind of throw the ball up and then you whack it. And of course you do, the effort is doing both of those things at once, but in very high vertical accelerations as well as horizontal. Which I think, you know, previously, we've been doing studies, rolling rocks down hillsides to see where they go, but with this vertical element at play as well. That meant that we were not really.
Well, just one of my suggestions, because I have done some research on this paleo anthropology, it's on the new technical features specifically on the liquid action induced features. Like sand boils and a little spread and all that thing, so because normally it happens that whenever there is a liquid action site, it keeps on happening. But sometimes it's so that, okay, once it is happened, it will not happen within us, like maybe ten years or maybe hundred years, because that soil gets densified. So like my point is, when you just, you can also make some studies regarding the paleoasymmetrical aspects. So that would help you actually to revive like what are the sequences so that you know that data gap has to be filled up.
Absolutely, so paleoasymmet studies have been carried out. I guess what the learning was, we thought also that, you know, if you have liquid action once, it's going to be some time before it occurs again. But what we found that was that just kept occurring and of a seven and eighty two, so the amount of silk that was produced is phenomenal.
That's a good for me also, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, sir, for the questions.
Just a few months, two to three months.
Does it happen, does that soil get? After this magnitude maybe?
Maybe, yeah, and you probably don't usually get so many of similar magnitude news like in over such a period.
Great, great, so I'm going back tomorrow, I guess, so perhaps there are some more things to discuss during dinner, hopefully. But proper, I believe you have something, so please.
Right now, yeah, engineering, geology and geotechnics for disaster risk, we have published it, it's intended to continue, so this is the thing like. You know, whatever the case, as Professor Chigira already mentioned, what the the preparation Japan already did for the the community information on. And the R I X information, but the problem is that how you communicate to the people, that is very important and I think right now, I was expecting from you, all of you are here. Professor, they're getting from Rwanda also here, like my 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 concern is that like how we can move for the this communication practice. Through the engineering participation of the engineering geologist and geotechnical engineer. That is a probably, this is a big challenge that I, like right now, we are going to face. Because when you talk about the communication system, you have a warning, so then what, who cares your warning? Because we, sorry to say that, please don't believe community that they will listen to you. That's the one thing that we have to have said, you 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 cannot say that as a government, you say something and then the people will listen you and then follow your all the instructions. So this is, this point is really very critical right now, that I. And I experienced from the last ten years in Nepalese case and also in other area. And I have been in Japan for a long time, so I saw the Japanese announcement and how the people react and how they behave here. Okay, so the thing is that like how you communicate? How the engineering geologists and geotechnical engineers can support in this communication process? So this part is very critical and I have to, I think we have to do some research on that one. So particularly, uh, what the lacking, we are, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm guessing, or I, I saw in the, in the whole process is that, like let's say you have a communication process. First, you do the dialogue in, in some cases, or sometime you, you will have a dissemination dialogue and then particip- participation. This is the mass communication process. And in whole process, where is the geology? Where is the engineering geology? Where is the geotechnical engineer? So this part is always lacking and you all, like, what do we do? We give the whole responsibility to the, our television anchor, our radio anchor, or our mobile center. That's it. So does it works here? So that, that's the point that we have to elaborate. And I think we are i- i- eligible, we are able to develop the, any kind of model. Uh, I have, I, I think to the nature, uh, probably although Caesar has so many restrictions, so many mystery, but whatever the case, we, we are now able to do something, yeah, in the, in to understand that the nature of phenomena. But the thing is that whether you know something, but can you derive it particularly in the community? And we, we don't, I don't think that community participation can help us for the R I C S, uh, and resilience process. Yeah, somehow it helps, but it doesn't work during the main event. So we have to be very careful on that one. So this is my, I don't know, where is, where is the question in my comment? But I think, uh, I'm able to write you, raise you the some, some very critical point where we have to be very, very, very precious, very, very precise.
Yes, yes. That's my, my, my. Thank you, Professor. Thank you for your remarks and point. Uh, before we give a, a floor to, uh, Professor Gani, perhaps a quick feedback from Tuzangaria, uh, addressing about while engaging local communities, empowering them and build them and as a local champions. And something, well, I think it was written clearly in our motivation notes about risk communication. And perhaps that though can share some of the Malaysian experience. Maybe we can also learn from Nepal, uh, the secrets, the recipe from Malaysia. So let's hear from that though.
Yeah, I think, yeah, your comments are very, very proper. But they depend on their culture and the, 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 the social fabric. What is in our experience in, uh, this, here in, uh, Mount Kinabalu? They have a good structure. We become the leaders. If, if this is, especially at origins, uh, this is our research study. Why would the leaders say they follow? There's some we cut then, we, we sit down with them, then if they are followers, together we sit. Every engagement must be continuous, not once after that we win. I think if you use a gadget, I, it doesn't, but this might be a personal touch. Uh, in fact, they are communicating with us almost every then and there. Even the water, the water, the, uh, what the river, what the river raise up, they send the email that, or the, the, the text up. That indicate they are very concerned about that. And the own committee sender, you know, they refresh it to us. That indicate that the community is really, uh, with us, I would say. And that's one other, depend on the local culture. Such open areas, very, the urban area, of course, all behalf of, of immigration, I would say. We have pronounced that everywhere, but we, we, we stay engaged with the groups.
That's a brilliant summary, Lisa.
Yes, it's all about localizations and leaderships. Thank you, that though, um, Annie, please. And I, I wish to hear a story from Kigali. Uh, believe me, uh, this is also another, uh, secret, uh, to be shared today, Professor. Uh, we have, uh, one quick remarks from our audience.
Okay, thank you very much. Actually, I did a very, yes, partly answered what I wanted to comment. Because after the, I'd say, I was waiting the tsunami in Malaysia. If I say something wrong, you correct me. We have this system where the response, you know, the response plan was, uh, initiated and what the local people in Kada and Penang told us how they were supposed to do. So that kind, I mean, it takes a disaster to put something like that in place. So maybe now after so many years, it has become a bit less. But I think it's still aware. The awareness is there. Similarly, uh, some time ago, uh, what in my opinion was maybe overhyped was the earthquake in Turkey. And then there was some sort of like, maybe like I said, maybe there's an overhyped sort of thing that, something that didn't happen in Malaysia until even I had to make some comment. That, you know, Turkey and Malaysia, their tectonics is a bit different. But when you talk about tectonics, the average Malaysian thinks that there's something wrong with, with my head. I don't know. They, they say you're crazy or something like that. But the, the point that I'm going to make is, uh, the local communities, uh, in my limited experience in this kind of thing, when they have faced the disaster, then they are very much more prepared. It's the same thing in, in, uh, Cayman Islands. Because in Cayman Islands, I, I've experienced this with myself. You go and do fieldwork there and you say you're doing it for the government, they're very unhappy with you. But after there's a disaster, you go ahead and say that you're doing this fieldwork to sort of come up with some mitigation measures for the disaster, then they're not unhappy with you. So it's, it's the, like, like you mentioned, it's a culture and how the disaster that has happened shapes the subsequent response. And the, what will say, the preparedness to, uh, listen and, uh, receive, uh, the measures or the, uh, you know, the measures that are being, uh, prepared by the authority. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Professor, for your remarks. Um, well, definitely, um, when I was, uh, visited Gazan Tap Hatay after a quakes, uh, last year. Give me a huge standing of the gaps in the world of the risk communication. Those who are investigations, assessments, mapping, understanding the phenomena and those who are receiving information. So who's supposed to be filling out these gaps, you know? Some of the geologists might be good in doing the work, but they might not be disseminating, communicating through the lemon, you know, the language that they understand. There's always a case, but, but perhaps it's something that we can learn from Kigali, from Rwanda. They have many secrets. Professor Dignity just share one of them, please.
Thank you very much. Uh, what, what, what I want to say is that when we are starting a new project, uh, we have chance to learn from other mistake. So, so the, if the early warning system is yet to be completed, we have chance to learn from other early warning system existing elsewhere in the world that, that we can take from lesson and, uh, and, uh, draw our own early warning system. That's why I say we can, in Rwanda, we are, we have a project in pipeline. There is a pilot project who, who use, uh, uh, automatic photography. But there is a consistent way to solve this issue. First of all, before you, you design an early warning system, you need to have baseline studies from geological perspective, from geotechnical perspective and around the country. This baseline is very cost, but it's needed. And the people who will do that baseline are scientists, are geologists, are geotechnicians. They will work under the request from the ministry in charge of, uh, emergency and the landslide and any, any situation that the be, can be generated by, uh, that natural hazard. That's one. Two, after that baseline, we need to have a modeling system that can generate an early warning system. The slide I just share with you is what we call L E W S. It under studies with one of my peer, the student. He, he discovered that we, we, we need at least four stages. One is the design. The second one is monitoring. The third one is forecasting. And the last is that education. And after this, all we communicate. Because one is design, geological knowledge, risk scenario, design criteria, showed geo indicator that is under the first component of design. Then we have the monitoring, instrument install, data collection, data transmission, data elaboration. It can be in different ways. It can be photography, it can be alarm, it can be sensor. But it's needed to be collected, elaborate and transmitted. Then la- the third one is forecasting. We need to have a data interpretation, a comparison of threshold, the forecasting method and the warning. All the three need to be in an agro-geomechanical model. Let's take an example for rainfall induced landslide. And this three component is one way to solve the issue. Then after we go to educate them. We don't educate people not everything. We don't educate them of risk perception. We educate on safe behavior. We educate in a response to warning. And we educate population involvement. That is the way we think. We will be able to respond. But before all this, a baseline study has to be done in different kind, uh, of, of natural disaster that's happening in Rwanda. F C A is one of them. Landslide is another one. Flood, sometime induced landslide. But we have also volcanic eruption and methane gas outburst from the lack of monitoring. So in Rwanda, we have, we have so many challenge in pipeline. But we think if we design it correctly with different partner, we can organize a very well system that involve the local population, the scientists in academia, the government institution and be able to respond effectively to, to, to this and, and develop a very productive early warning system. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Professor Dignity. Um, I think we come to the last cycles. Um, uh, well, we have couple of minutes to go. Uh, I know there are some questions, uh, from the audience here, but we do have one questions, uh, from the participants who are joining online from Rwanda, from Wili. Um, well, let me quickly read this greeting from Rwanda, Han Wili. Uh, considering the lesson learned globally, uh, disaster are clearly linked to geological and geotechnical function as presented by our panelists. In our tech-driven era, particularly with A I and early warning system, what innovative solution should be brought to rights to similarly integrate geological knowledge and geotechnical expertise for global disaster resilience? How can we strategically leverage cutting-edge technology to ensure maximum effectiveness worldwide? Wow. Uh, while this, the answer is not yes or no, definitely. Uh, and we have just couple of minutes to go. I will give, well, always ladies first. The, the difficult parts, always ladies, they, they can handle nicely. Uh, but I think Professor Chigira can also tell us, uh, about the technology clue on the, the geological knowledge and, uh, geotechnical expertise. How we filling up the gap with the inputs from, uh, technology? And perhaps that though can give some clue on, on the early warning system, people-centric early warning system. I think Professor Dignity has mentioned a lot on, on the impact base, uh, from design to the implementation. It has to be carefully co-designed with respective, uh, knowledge from the geology, geotechnical engineering and, and also local traditional and indigenous knowledge. So, and process.
Thank you. Um, look, another very good question. I think, uh, that there's an opportunity here and we have the International Association for Engineering Geology here, um, that we develop a working group internationally to bring, um, this knowledge together and our thinking together. Um, we're all on a bit of a trajectory when it comes to A I. Um, and, you know, making different advances, um, in different areas. Um, so combining that knowledge should help us to move faster. That would be one thing I want. I, I don't want to also be completely negative, but I, I want to say that, you know, there are some of the really basic things that we need to do well and to do them and continue to do them. And that's recording, um, our observations and bringing them together in a standardized way. I think that way, if we, if we have a way that we all record, we can share data very much more easily. And then we can use it to, um, for, to, uh, calibrate machine learning because you need really good data to calibrate, uh, machine learning. Um, the other thing I would like to say, and it's probably stepping back and sorry off your question slightly, is that, uh, you know, the memory of people is, is short. Um, and, you know, the earthquakes in Kanabri, they occurred now thirteen years ago. Uh, you can still see some of the, uh, unresolved sites in the city and yet people have put it behind them and moved on. And in their minds, the next earthquake's, uh, not in their lifetime. And so the behaviors are not, uh, taking these things on board. Uh, one final thing is, uh, you know, there are so many, certainly in my country and I'm sure in Nepal and I'm sure actually in Malaysia, there's so many narrow roads and so forth with, that are all susceptible to, uh, landsliding. And we see some, and, you know, the beginnings of movement, we identify sites that need to be repaired. But how can we afford to repair all of those, uh, networks? So how are we going to prioritize and, and put our money where, where it needs to be, um?
Good, good. Thank you. And, um, Professor Chigira, you have some additional remarks to add on, please?
Okay, uh, thank you, Professor. Uh, I would say, in the last slide I showed you before, uh, eh, hazard mapping have been made in Japan all over, mostly all over Japan. But, uh, uh, they're say based on the topography rather than the geological features. However, huge numbers of engineering geologists, uh, have been working to, to make such as a, as a map. So there is a gap. Uh, geologists have, uh, say, tendency to, to say, like, very detailed and very various properties. But to make, uh, hazard mapping, hazard map or something like that, we need to simplify eh, the geology and other factors. So that's kind of a gap, but, uh, um, that's the important thing we need to overcome. Say, that's just, uh, hazard map I showed you before. And also, uh, alarming system based on the rainfall monitoring. As I mentioned, the ground, uh, the structure of self-surface is only one to make, uh, that system. But, uh, as a geologist, uh, that's not true. Many, many various, uh, structures. But we need to, we need to find, uh, say, uh, how to say, simple, simple model. And we need to, we need to improve such a system, not, not, uh, yeah, we need to cooperate and, uh, improve such a system. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And, and that was a comment?
A good tip for me. Uh, this based on my experience in, uh, Guinevere.
young them, uh we will set up a early warning, early warning system. Uh probably designed, but then when come through the construction, we uh let the locality participate in that. Watching, putting cable in, decide where to put the protection and so on. So the search belonging. Then that's on not only that, after that, I think now is thirty second years. We have a series of engagement, mentor and so on. So I think we did the community part of the design and also implementation, I mean, construction and so on. But you feel that the early warning system belongs to them or them. And that's one of the way, I think, I've been not sure, this group of people. Uh so often we have local champion who really did during the disaster. So we beat that that guy. We know based on the story we survey, you or them ladies and their local people that they are very active during the disaster. I think people, so we get uh people as a leader. I mean, locally, the picking of locally, there's a very crucial show in in the bodies uh early warning system uh implementation and effectiveness.
Thank you. Um yes, Dr. Rahayu, someone please. Please.
Uh thank you. Uh because I, in this discussion, most of the um is dependent is based based on the um structural mitigation. I would like to ask, how about non-mitigation such like insurance for community? Uh because uh it's one of um issues actually. And then is, uh I think it's important uh for community to have insurance community.
Yes, it's a good and valid questions. Thank you, Dr. Rahayu, for bringing into the discussion. While basically, we really, really have much time to complete the session. I'm not sure whether we have some best practice from New Zealand, some ability to transfer on the insurance. Perhaps they engage geologists to end one very quick, but I do believe we have some initiative in in Japan incorporating the local knowledge into this risk transfer program. And I think early warning system is one of the non-structural measure. Uh but I think the the insurance base require sufficient information. So perhaps geology uh informations could also lead to some of the better decisions into what type and which um mechanism should be in the designs of the risk transfer like insurance. I'm not sure. And you have something to share? Yeah, yes, please.
Um interesting question. Um so in New Zealand, we have an unusual system. It's for the EQC, the earthquake commission. Uh and so if you have any level of insurance on your property. Um the EQC will pay out in the event of a natural disaster. Uh and so in New Zealand, there is over eighty percent of people are insured for a natural disaster effectively. Um although there is, you know, what they actually pay out is is another question. But uh so that's interesting. Um I guess you're wondering how we can inform the insurance price. Because uh you know, insurers have not been doing too well um in recent years with natural disasters. Um and I know this is just an example, but a program in in Canterbury. Um there had been practice up until that point where um structural engineers were sometimes masquerading as geotags. Um and so there was few investigations because people felt the geological profile wasn't too variable. Um since that time, uh there has been a requirement for at least one investigation or whole on every site that is developed. Um and that is to provide the insurers with some additional information on which to make some of their insurance judgments, just in a small example.
Okay, thank you. And I I think we come to the end. I'm not sure whether there are still budding questions from the audience here in the hall. Or online? No, I think it's perfect. Uh it's a five zero zero my time, Malaysian time. We have promised ten key recommendations. Let's pop up on the screen. I share with the audience online. Um some of them are policymakers, disaster managers, professional engineers, professional geologists. Let's have a look together. Um it's still a draft. We will circulate and to get more inputs from the audience physically and virtually. I think it's coming soon. Yes.
Malaysian.
Oh, seriously. Uh that's wrong. That's wrong. We did not purpose. We want to sell our product, our program. It's by design, yeah? Yeah, well, for those who are interested with the Masters of Disaster Risk Management, please do contact us. Yes, ten key recommendations. Believe me, this one of the most remarkable groups who are walking behind the scene. They went to your sessions, consult during dinner. They don't care about the foods. They just think of their recommendation last night. So let's present. So the first part, if you look into this international knowledge sharing platforms. I think Professor Ranjan did mention about the the knowledge, the data learning from the field. And also, and did mention about field is the key. We have to going through the field and 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 observe more. Number two, uh we put on the inter-trans disciplinary partnerships. I think that Zakaria did uh express a concern on how one particular field and and how basically they can communicate with other stakeholders. Professor Danny did mention about the risk communication. I think this multi inter-trans disciplinary partnership is one of the way forward. And third, on mainstreaming this disaster risk reduction agenda and climate change adaptation is about six years to go. To send a framework for disaster risk reduction, SDG and many more global agenda. We are talking about twenty thirty agenda and post twenty thirty. So we need that uh say national, regional, national and 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 state and local level types of strategies and action. Uh definitely engineering geology and geotechnical engineering practices is have a bigger clues into this equation. Number four, I think this one of the remarkable points from young geologists, young professional engineers look into this increased funding and support. So it's not just about traveling to Nepal, traveling to Bangladesh next year to attend the conference. But also a small grants solving unsolved problems. They need funding. They need to explore and going to the field and collect more data. I think we keep on talking about these mechanisms, financial mechanisms, not only IAAG. S E G R M, there are also other professional association here. Number five, on the multi-skill collaborations across sectors, public, private academia. But don't forget governmental and non-governmental organization, civil society organization. So to integrate these engineering geology expertise into the committee base disaster risk management initiative. I think that Zakaria has mentioned a few points and Professor Dignity has shared the say secrets on how we can co-design, co-develop four major teams and integrate into this major pipeline on the impact base of people-centric early warning systems. And there was of empowering local communities. I think we had discussed about that next. Number six, until ten, I'm not going to read one by one, but number six is about cutting-edge technology. I still remember ten years ago when we bring the technology, LiDAR technology. It worth for fifty billion ring in Malaysia for one thousand five hundred square kilometer. But nowadays, you can have double triples than with such budget. So we need to explore even more modern technology, particularly remote sensing, GIS. And Professor Chigira did mention about open source GIS. Yes. Well, there are many open source society, making open the data. Uh so the decisions was also make uh trans parents through this and artificial intelligence, AI has been discussed. Uh keep in mind about the last words, number six, information making. I think that's one of the most important part. And it's not about accurate information, but also very timely. Number seven, about establishment of regional task force or specialized working groups. We had a quick discussion about that and we have a vice president here. Both, um please have a look and this one of the resolutions from Kuala Lumpur. Um and and consider these diverse and region-specific geo-hazard challenges. And number eight, a vocation advocates for the inclusion of the engineering geology and ge and geotechnic in in national and regional policy frameworks. It's not just about making developing a policy recommendation and intervention, but how important to translate those into action. And and it does mention about the critical infrastructures of planning and and local disaster risk reduction agenda. Number nine, support initiative that promote gender equality um in our city. Unfortunately, we have end on on the stage, but perhaps we need to invite more analysts, more members, more uh gender balance in the association. So I I hope that the message here has been from transmitted through the presidents, the speech by the presidents of I A G on the first day. But the keywords, uh number nine, the second part, mentorships programs. I think in in Japan, we do have this Kohai Senpai, you know, senior and junior. Uh I think let's explore and keep in mind these scholarships, fellowships, give a good uh say, budget and purity to the female representations. And number ten, lucky or not, I A G, S E G R M have to evolve. Uh there are many more international, regional organizations at the moment. One of them is the United Nations Office for Disaster Risk Reduction, who are basically oversee the Sendai Monitor. Uh particularly dealing with the disaster risk reduction and resilience. And not to mention these international forums on geo-disaster reduction. So that was Zakaria, in fact, um two weeks ago, three weeks ago, they have launched a national association for geo-disaster and 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 community resilience date. That's that's it for today. That's what was written in my contract. Supposed to finish last two minutes. So then key recommendation has been presented and delivered. Let's join me to give a big hand to our panels. And to Professor Chigira, Professor Dignity, believe me, these four panelists, they can talk hours. Um you can just name it whatever questions. Uh but ladies first, yeah. So there's always, uh we look into the complexity of the questions and understanding the process, but most important part, learning from the past, so that we can make a better uh decisions in the near future. So as a moderator today, we would like to apologize any hiccups, any inconvenience and I'm happy to end the sessions. Thank you very much for your intentions. I turn over again to Mr. Paolo. Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Please, yeah, give a round of applause for our lines of speakers. Kamalau and William, that do, Zakaria, Professor Chigira and Professor Dignity. So I would like to invite every, all the moderators and the panelists uh to the seat. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, as we go on here to our the end of our conference. Uh it's time to reflect on the incredible journey we had together by watching. Uh oh, haven't passed yet. Oh, please. So we have prepared some adventurous video, yeah?